I'll go to the November meeting of the Board of Education. I call this meeting to order. Please rise and please recite these.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I would encourage all this evening to stay focused on the business before us as outlined in the meeting agenda. The issues of the past week will be addressed through the appropriate processes in due course. Our priority this evening is to complete the work at hand in support of the district's vision and mission, which I will now read. The vision of the Cameron R. One School District is to offer an exceptional educational experience. The mission of the Cameron R. One School District is to educate and empower our students to reach their full potential. We'd like to welcome the students and the audience. So, we have before you the proposed agenda. I would take a motion to approve by Mrs. Ice, second by Mrs. Clark, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Consent agenda, that would be approval of the pass minutes, approval of financial reports, and then also the notice of school board candid filing, which is available on the... I don't... my computer won't load up, so the dates are not here. But there is a filing window on there.
December 9th.
December 9th is the first day. Okay, so that is there on the website with the agenda in case anyone is interested. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second by Mrs. Peck, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Non-ashby reports. Ms. Atkinson?
Are there...
You can see the... We want to know until people file. We'll have to see who files. Yeah, there will be three people whose terms are up. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Good evening. My name is Lily Early, and I'm a seventh grader in TVMS Student Council Executive Member. We are here to tell you a little about the organization we have reestablished at our school three years ago and all the positive changes that we have noticed in that time. One of our main goals is to have a student-led organization that involves all students. Also, we have open membership. This means any student can join that has filled out an application during the designated time period. However, to be an executive council member, you have to be a member for at least one year and have a teacher recommendation as well. We currently have seventy-one members. Even if a student is not a member, all of our events are for our students. We really make an effort to plan and carry out activities that relate to a wide variety of student interests. We plan everything from school-wide spirit campaigns, social activities, and community service events. Next up, Emmett Cass.
Hello, my name is Emmett Cass. I'm an eighth grader in Stuco Executive Council Member. Our school-wide spirit competitions are something I look forward to being a part of. Last year, we got the idea to promote school spirit and dragon pride and mix it with a little friendly competition by hosting a grade competition at least once a quarter. The winning grade gets the honor of housing our school spirit stick that we created. The first one we did was with... Grades competed against each other and were awarded points in the following categories: participation in the spirit dress-up days, highest attendance, and lowest discipline. Then, on the last day, we hosted an assembly where students from each grade competed against each other in three different games. Games are either an activity or trivia questions. Then, at the conclusion of the assembly, total points are tallied and a winning grade is announced. It is really neat when we all come together to see all of the students cheering their classmates on. So far, our sixth grade class is one of the spirit competitions. If that is going to change at our next one, which will be the last week in December. Next up, Parker Reeves.
I'm Parker Reeves, a seventh grader in TVMS Executive Council Member. I'm going to explain a few of the different social activities that our chapter plans for all of our students. Each semester, we look to plan at least one event or activity per month for our school. We believe that this helps to increase a sense of belonging and excitement. Of course, learning is the most important, but a little extra on top of that doesn't hurt. Our two major social events are school dances. We host at least two a year. We typically try to have one for a semester, but due to a very busy fall semester schedule, our first dance will be on January twenty-third, our second one will be April. For November, we are hosting a turkey disguise competition amongst the homerooms. We had poster-sized turkey templates printed out, and homerooms will have two weeks to decorate and create the best disguise for a turkey. We will pick a winner from each grade. Another example is in February when we host a steal-my-heart competition. Students who choose to participate can challenge one another to participate in a rock-paper-scissors competition. The winner gets hearts. Once students have stolen twenty-five hearts, they get a ticket from our advisor to participate in an ultimate rock-paper-scissors competition in the gym on the following day. The ultimate winner earns a gift basket of Valentine-related goodies. Those are just a few of the many social activities we host. And here's Ava Gibson.
Lastly, I'm Ava Gibson, an eighth grade Executive Council Member, and I am proud to share with you our upcoming service events that we have been working on. Being Cameron Veterans Middle School, our veterans are very important to us. When the Executive Council Members attended the district's Stuco meeting in October, a group of us got some ideas of some extra ways in which we can honor our veterans. The first one we brought to our school was to create a display that all the students would help create that would allow them to honor any specific veterans that they knew, as well as all veterans. We had them decorate poppy cutouts and displayed them in a central location in our school surrounding a soldier cutout. We had our display created in time for Veterans Day and will have it up through our bigger event, which is our annual Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day on December 5th. Our Student Council chapter has been working on this since October, and we are really excited to bring it to our school and community. I personally took the lead to contact our local veterans home, and they have helped us find our keynote speaker and are bringing a group of veterans to attend our honorary breakfast in our program. We have two of our sixth grade Boy Scouts presenting the colors, and our band and choir will be providing music. I'm excited to see all of our hard work come together on December 5th to host a program that is as special as each and every veteran. On behalf of our Student Council, I would like to personally invite each and every one of you to our annual Pearl Harbor Remembrance Assembly on December 5th at nine a.m. in the Performing Arts Center. Thank you for your time, and do you have any questions?
The spirit stick, is it like a hockey stick?
Our spirit, it's like a paper towel roll. And it's decorated with glitter, and it has a candy dragon on it. We'd also like to give a shout-out to Ms. Atkinson for making all of this possible.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson, you've just got a Stuco award, didn't you?
I did.
Congratulations. Did you all say there are seventy-one students involved? That is fabulous. That... we need leadership everywhere, and thank you guys for modeling that for TVMS.
And if you want a rock-paper-scissors challenge, the board will take you.
Or if you'd like, when you decorate the turkeys, if you want to send us an email and so we can see the hard work and creativity, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you. A lot of work.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I wouldn't want to follow that, but I'm going to let Mrs. Bartlett.
Okay. This year, I decided to kind of find a way to put technology and writing together and created the CIS newspaper. How I kind of formatted that is I run two classes a quarter that are fifth... I do it just with fifth grade. Each group will include up to ten kids. They have to complete an application with a writing prompt on it. And then, if needed, I usually... I will ask somebody who doesn't know those kids to kind of look through them and pick the ten. Luckily, I haven't had to do that yet, but at the same time, I'm like, I wish more people would have joined. But then, during fourth quarter, I'm going to open that back up because some of the kids that I... Like, my first-quarter kids are like, I wish I would have done that. So then, now for fourth quarter, I'll open it up to everybody to give them that chance if they want to. I interviewed... or I had three kids kind of tell what they thought about it. Tinley and Harper both have been in the club, and Garrett is somebody who hasn't been in the club yet. So I just kind of wanted to get like what they thought. So these are just some of the things they said.
What do you think about the newspaper program?
I think it's nice. I think it's kind of cool that, like, just to read about your friends' where it has been going over a couple of weeks and months or quarters. Like, there's some reading about the other teachers are doing, what they're teaching us and stuff. I think it's like a good idea, pretty smart to the board and stuff.
Can we see Tinley's again? I couldn't hear her.
Yeah.
I like staying at school and writing, and then I like to pass out the newspapers and watch the people read them while we get ready.
So, I'm really proud of this program and how it's gone so far because I love just the teamwork and kids who, you know, don't usually like hang out together and just to sit there. And I'll just sit back and just listen to their conversations, and it's really, really cool to see all that teamwork and the creativity and the confidence that they have... The confidence that it has given them too of, you know, taking the pride in producing what, you know, and publishing these newspapers. And they're always so full of smiles of wanting to share their work. And I try usually... We meet on Wednesdays, and so like our paper will be finished tomorrow. So then, on Thursday, they come into my room in the mornings, and they get to actually go and they get to be the new... You know, the paper kids, and they take them and actually pass them out into the class... Take them to the classrooms, and they think that's really cool, too. And then, just kind of some of my final thoughts that I had. It said, "It's been exciting to see students come in each week eager to write and to contribute." I have kids that will come in in the mornings and be like, "I need my folder because I need to go interview somebody." And so they'll do that, or they just... Or they want to come in and be like, "I thought of an idea. Could we maybe do this on our next paper?" And so, it's always just really cool, like that genuine enthusiasm that they have. And so, it's so cool because, you know, kids are like, "Oh, I don't want to have to write." But these kids are just like, you know, they just kind of keep, you know... They're like, "Our time's almost up already," you know? So it's really fun. They really enjoy it, so. Thank you guys for the time to be able to come and talk to you guys. Thank you.
What are the topics or do they write about?
Um, they always have like a feature story, so something that has happened in the school. Like, I'm trying to think. This one is... like, their feature story is about... I think it's Red Ribbon Week of how Red Ribbon Week went. There is always a spotlight, so they pick some, you know, some people in the school. Like, this time, they wanted to do the spotlight on our janitors. And so, they asked the kids like three questions... Or ask them like three questions. And then, we talk really big about that quotes have to be exactly what they say. You can't change what, you know, change that. And then, there's always a third-grade section, a fourth-grade section, and a fifth-grade section. And a lot of times, it's maybe what they're studying. And they go and they ask the kids like, "So what do you think about what you're doing in science right now?" And so, and then, there's another section that... We call it the sports section, but we haven't done sports in that section yet. They usually have some, like, another activity of some sort. Like, I think this time it's about our veterans' breakfast that we had. And so...
I'm sorry, you probably said this, but how often do they...
They meet... We meet for an hour... Or we meet until four o'clock every Wednesday.
And how often do you print?
We do two... They get to produce two newspapers a quarter.
That's great.
So, the first, you know, we do four weeks for our first one because that first week, we talked about how to write a newspaper, how to write an article, and we would do that. And then, we have three weeks to do our second one. So, yeah, they're very excited. I was hoping that we'd have it done in time to bring it tonight, but we've still got a few more things we got to do tomorrow.
We can still send it. Because that will be tonight, so.
Yes. I think Mrs. Rucker tries to...
They're in the boardroom.
Put them in there for you, so. Well, thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Okay, bond and center project.
Yeah, I'll finish kind of with the summer projects. I know we're in November. It seems like we shouldn't be talking about summer anymore, but we did finish up the concrete. I think we were talking about that. They had just done that work the other day or the last meeting we had. So that concrete was done. In fact, they pulled all the cones and everything today. And then, we just had to have some lines painted for our handicap parking, so we'll have a lot more accessibility for that whole area. And then, also, the other one that we finished was the wellness room. We had started on that. We moved all of our equipment from the mezzanine area down into the wellness room, put a card reader on that. Had a little bit of problems. It worked all the way until the first day, and then the card reader went kapoos on us. But anyway, so we had to cut a wire or something when they were doing the remodel, and so we had to reattach that. And so, now we've got that going. We've given the option for our staff and their spouses to be able to use that room anytime. So kind of, they're able to use that... utilize that space, and we're excited about it. It's a really nice space. If you come by the... That room's pretty well been everything since I've been here. It's been health, it's been ISS, it's been a former locker room. I mean, it's been everything. So I think we've got a really good space in there right now. It's really nice-looking, and we've got room to be able to put TVs up and everything else, and so...
And when did it open?
A week or two ago, I think. Yeah, I'd say a week or two ago. I can't remember when we soon all out, but it's been open for a little bit. So, employees and their spouses still use that. As far as our bond issue, I'm just going to go ahead and read. Yeah.
The ball, the handicap parking. Are we getting grades?
We'll have to do some grade work. When they got that done, it was literally right before the first football game. We kind of reckoned we didn't have too much of a wet fall, but we're hoping maybe before... Maybe next summer, but we'll see if we can get them before track. We're probably going to have to have a water survey and all types of stuff because we're probably going to have to take about fourteen inches of ground and kind of push it to the east or to the south and to kind of level that off. The handicap parking is great, but the way that berm is, it's going to run all the water back over it. We're going to have gravel all over our handicap parking. So, we'll look at that. We'll talk to a couple of people, but we're going to have to have a water survey and some other stuff. And so, we're not sure if we'll have that all done by track or if that'll be a next summer-type project. But yes, we will. We will have that. And the handicap parking was much appreciated this year, I think, for a lot of people. Instead of just putting some blue cones out and still having to trek through the gravel, it was... it worked out very well. As far as the bond issue, I'm just going to read real quickly what Jeff Ellison, our architect, had to say. I asked him for kind of an update on our roof project. I know Gina put out some stuff the other day and had some pictures and stuff up there. Roof project is progressing well. All of the roof membrane is installed in the main areas. They're working on the flashings today. This was actually yesterday. That leave only the metalwork to wrap up. They expect to be complete by the end of the month in two weeks. High school plans are also progressing well. We're in the construction documents phase, which is where we make the final drawings and specifications to release to the bidders. The plan is to put them out right after the holidays. The time between Thanksgiving and Christmas is not a good time to have contractors bid. If we bid after the first... If we bid after the first of the year, the contractors will be able to begin as soon as the weather allows. So, I think we're still in pretty good shape on that. I was kind of hoping we were going to be in a position to be able to do some bids possibly in December, but it sounds like we're still getting specifications and things like that. So, but that's where we're at with the bond project. And I think I won't have any more summer projects until we start talking about next summer, so.
When will you be able to share like the plans or...
We shared a lot of the plans with some of the high school staff already. We've had them look those over. Just some preliminary, I wouldn't say preliminary. I'd say we're probably eighty, ninety percent of where we're looking at, and we've had some changes, you know, trying to get as many classrooms in there as we can. And then, we had Jason have a lot of his staff to come in and look at those plans and kind of make recommendations and stuff like that. I'll see if I can bring in kind of what we think are pretty close plans. I'll see if I can bring those to the next meeting so that everyone can see those, so. Very, very similar to what we thought, just, you know... Just, it's like moving a classroom here, moving a classroom there type situation. But yeah, very similar to what we... For the most part, plans.
And a space for like half lockers or something?
We should be able to put half lockers on the top and bottom because we'll have... The way that will be built will only be classrooms. If you can imagine, when you go down the south, it'll just be a hallway with classrooms on the west. There won't be any classrooms on... So you'll just have classrooms on the west on top and bottom of each other. And so, yeah, you've got that whole wall where you can only put half lockers, top and bottom, and have more than enough lockers for our students.
And we determined that ground source heat, we've got a plan and all that. I know you've kind of got...
Yes, we have been. There's probably going to have to be some lines moved just because when that building, when it goes out, it's going to get into it a little bit. Where they're not at, if we put something there, we would actually be covering up all of our science classrooms when we're trying to, you know, the next... And so, we don't want to do that. But that would be the only place where those are not at. So we are going to have to move some of those lines to make that function. Now, I will say, we may just abandon a few of those because in more... I'm going to build the egg shop. The eggs on its own system along with the facts. Science classrooms are still on the old system, but like we took the gym off. We put that unit on the back. So, gym's off of it, so. And then, this building will not be a part of the ground source. They'll have its own...
So it's just kind of that central artery?
It's going to be kind of the central artery and then all the way out to the end of the band and choir rooms. So, yeah, so it's going to be kind of... It's going to be a little odd, and that's probably why, as you remember, that the choir rooms are all really hot and really cold, is because we had a long way to go for that. And then, it was stopping gym first, and it's filling that gigantic space before it ever went to the back classrooms, which we haven't had the issue with the gym or the back classrooms since we put the gym on its own system, so.
Any other questions about that? Superintendent search update.
So, our survey concluded with a hundred and fifty responses from parents, teachers, community members, support staff, students, and more. So if you took the time out of your busy schedules to do that, we really appreciate the input and feedback. So, one of the questions that was asked on the survey was to check off the three most important professional skills and qualifications that you'd like to see in a new superintendent. And those top three were recruit, support, and retain effective staff members, foster a positive culture and climate for teachers and staff, and effectively manage district resources. The other question that was asked was to please check off the three most important personal traits or qualities you'd like to see in a new superintendent. And those were approachable, accessible, and welcoming, demonstrate ethics and integrity, and possess strong communication skills. In addition to that, MSBA and the consultants put together a summary of the strengths for the Cameron schools, which include dedicated and caring teachers and staff, positive culture and community support, improved learning facilities, fiscal strength, and variety of enrichment and extracurricular opportunities. So those were strengths that were identified by those who filled out the survey. The challenges for the Cameron schools, as seen by those hundred and fifty people that took the survey, include staffing, retention, teacher pay, and support, consistent communication, student behavior and expectations, student achievement and curriculum offerings, and staying mission-focused amid external negativity. The results of the survey, I'm going to ask our communications director, Gina Baneum, to go ahead and put those out on our school website tomorrow so that if you're interested in seeing more about the survey and some of the other items that were ranked and how they were ranked, you have access to those. In addition to that survey, MSBA and the consultants had nine focus group sessions with staff, teachers, and administrators. And just a broad overview of some of that input included fostering a positive and collaborative culture, strengthen communication and accessibility, recruit, support, and retain quality staff, ensure financial strength and effective resource management, promote a unified and collaborative vision for the district, and more visibility and longevity. So these are the things that came from the focus groups. And I think that was about a week or so ago when that took place. So I really appreciate the consultants. They're working very hard for the district. And to bring everyone up to speed on the number of superintendent applications, we have fourteen. Ten of them have fully submitted their applications. Four of them are in progress. This number is very competitive with other districts of our size. So fourteen is a good number at this point, and the deadline for applications is November 30th, I believe. So we have a little bit more time, but they are coming in and being processed as they do come in. And then, I'd like for Mrs. Clark to go ahead and talk a little bit about the timeframe that we're up against now.
First of all... Yeah, and I would echo what Mrs. Teck said, that the MSBA consultants have given us tremendous help and great support, and they do a lot of searches throughout and have assured us that we're in a good position for where we are right now. One of the things that I think I've shared with everybody is that we... Because the applicant window closes on November 30th, on December 1st, Jackie and I will meet via Zoom with Trent Brandon Meyer, who is the MSBA lead consultant, and Mark Daniels, who is a retired superintendent of the North Andrews School District who advises. The four of us will go through all of the applications and with their help, pull out the top four to eight of those applications and bring them in for... Not bring them in, but invite them to do a screening interview with the whole board. That'll be via Zoom, and that is on December 4th, 8:00 a.m. And we will determine if we all want to be in the same spot for that, or we can Zoom from, you know, kind of Brady Bunch style from wherever we are. And that... But those will be via Zoom. And the questions, they have worked with us to develop questions based upon what the survey results have revealed. And so, they'll have... We'll bring kind of suggested questions, the scoring rubric,[1765.52] of suggested questions, the scoring rubric, and from that, we will winnow it down to two to three candidates that we will then bring into Cameron for. And the timeline on that will be a little dependent on what we encounter on December fourth. Does anybody have any questions about where we are or?
How many did you say that we will do the screening for?
We're thinking four to eight. We leave it, I mean, that's not firm. I think eight.
They also told us those would be thirty, forty minutes.
Yeah.
For applicants. So.
So we're talking about like the whole morning?
Yes.
Yes.
It would be a long morning. And if anybody on the board is, would like to see any application course, that they're, they're open to the board. Just let us know. There's been a little bit of a technical difficulty opening all of them. And so they're working on that for Jackie and I. Or if you have any questions, don't hesitate to, to ask. Our goal is to hire either before Christmas or immediately after Christmas. And we've been assured that we're in a good position with that timeline.
So for calendar purposes, you know, other dates that we need to be aware of because blocking calendars.
Of course, of course. Yes. And the only reason some of that is dependent on who we screen. And that has to do with other interviews they might be doing and so.
We'll know more after the fourth. I know it's.
But you would have.
Is there time we should go ahead and walk off? Some stuff's going to be covered in holidays. So.
There would be nothing over the holidays. January fifth would be a, a possible informal interview day with a backup of maybe seven. Yeah, if there's snow or something, because we would all have to be in person on that.
So more off January fifth than January seventh. Okay. And then like what about the week, like the fifteenth through the eighteenth night?
That.
Anything there?
No, that has been, we've tried to, and Trent has done a great job of helping us accelerate a little bit, just in light of you want to get out in front of other districts.
Sure.
So that's kind of where that is. And Dr. Robinson, that timeline is similar to what we encountered when we hired you. I think we hired you before Christmas. Isn't that right?
Right before.
Yeah.
So thank you for the two of you running this process.
Sure.
You, you said that MSBA has been great through this process. Do you feel the same way? I mean, are we very pleased with everything?
I, I feel very proud about what we've been able to see.
Yeah, I know the talks that I had at the MSBA conference over the team. I mean, you could see that they were very in tune to this process.
They're very well plugged in to administrators around the state.
And quick responses to emails and texts and phone calls. And, and they're reaching out to different tenants with answers to questions. They're working hard. And that's what we expect.
That's good. I mean, I think we're very confident. The choice that we made is tough after hearing that.
Well, I won't lie. It's, anytime there's change, it's, it's nerve wracking. Thanks for all the work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the two of you. Take care.
We're going to defer our MSBA conference topics until another meeting to allow for everyone's perspective or feedback on how we should run that list. So we'll move on to the administrative reports. And first up would be special services.
Good evening.
Hello.
First thing I want to do is give a shout out to Chasby and Denise for all their assistance. We have a lot of state reporting that comes in the hall. And they have been amazing with pulling anything that we need from any of their reports for our FDRs and all of our district reports. So sometimes those behind the scenes, people don't always get the love and shout out. So I'll make sure that we give them that. Same thing for Adam and Ashley, process coordinators, and then our SLPs. Make sure everything's in line, everything's coded correctly in our system. As we roll early childhood kids into kindergarten, it's not coded correctly, we get error reports. So takes a lot of hands to get those reports all in correctly. So shout out to all of them. Another celebration is we added to the Parkview family and to the Spud family, one of our teachers had a baby. Kat Clausen had a, a baby boy, a big baby boy. Big baby boy. Ten pounds, fifteen ounce baby boy. So, but they are doing great. So joins, C section, but joins the family of sisters. So we will definitely be spoiled. So we're excited to see that baby. And then last thing I want to just point out is tomorrow is a Special Olympics event. We go bowling in Plattsburgh tomorrow. So kids are excited about that. And we are also, we're working, we're in the middle of planning our Fine Arts Frenzy, and that will be December eleventh. So, and we host the Fine Arts Frenzy. We're excited about that. We have some eighth grade students that have been helping with our adapted PE class. And so they will be volunteering to help us that day, kind of run some of the events and help with the art classes. So we had that class, the kids actually came and asked if they could do that. So it's kind of, kind of cool. The high schoolers all know about it because they've helped in the past. But now eighth graders working with our adapted PE class, they're getting to experience that. So Mr. Fisher contacted me and said, hey, can we make this happen? So we're going to get some of the younger kiddos involved as being role models. So pretty cool. I think there's like fourteen or fifteen kids, eighth graders, that will be helping with that Fine Arts Frenzy. On top of our theater department, choir, band, dance, flags. So that whole group will be helping with our Fine Arts Frenzy, letting our kiddos have that experience. So be excited. Yeah. It's a big one. We thought the wiffle ball was big until we threw in the Fine Arts Frenzy, and it's really big. It's a great experience. It's not just a sport. So kids get to experience a lot of different things. So, but bowling is tomorrow in Plattsburgh. It's tomorrow morning. We should be back at school by twelve thirty. So, yeah, we're excited.
Questions?
Yeah, they're, it's not, they don't get as competitive with the bowling. It's not, we don't have to worry about tackling anybody. Love the competitive spirit, but bowling isn't as competitive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Parkview.
Hello, everyone. So at Parkview, we've been extremely busy. And we are, we still are. I wanted to report that our parent teacher conference attendance, there's a breakdown there for you by grade level, but overall ninety-three percent in attendance. So that was great. Most of you guys have probably seen on Facebook or social media, we do host a lot of community events. We recently just had one. It was our fall title bingo night. And we ended up serving sixty families. So that was great. They got to go around to stations to collect their bingo card. And at each station, there was a skill taught by a teacher that parents could then take home to practice with their kids. And we also this time added parents as teachers to our event. And they had a great showing with fifteen of their families coming in that night. So it was really fun to see that. The kids were super excited. They're, of course, pros at all of these strategies they're teaching their parents. So that's always fun to see. Also, first quarter, my, this was a new experience for me, very fun, loved it. We had our first quarter attendance parade. And that's where students were at a hundred percent attendance, got to run the halls. I was terrified when I was first.
Did they have to use the wrong basics when they do that?
No, no. But what I love the most about it is that every kid's involved in it, whether they had a hundred percent attendance or not, because they line the halls and cheer their friends on. And everybody gets a chance the next semester because it resets. So I really love that Parkview tradition. So that was great. And overall, things are just smooth sailing right now. Did you have any questions from my report?
No questions, but I just wanted to say, like, a shout out to the Tacy's, Dunkin' Donuts, Sonic Wendy's, that all donated coupons to Parkview. I just love the support the community gives to our kids.
Yeah, it's amazing. And the kids really do value those coupons. And then class, class wise, we celebrate that way too with attendance. And they get Smarties. And a fun note, in any class with a hundred percent attendance, Mrs. Riley goes in and reads a book to them. And they really love that. So we really work hard on attendance and the kids love it. So.
Your enrollment numbers, is that ten additional since the beginning of school?
Yes.
Or since last month or?
Just since the beginning of the school year. We had, yeah, we had a little uptick, which is great.
More than here.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
CIS.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We just wanted to go over a couple of exciting things that are happening, non-academic actually, at CIS. Mrs. Githin's class through Discovery Dairy has adopted a cow. And they have a new picture of the cow. Her name is Fruit Loop. She was just born, she was adopted out of the College of the Ozarks. So every month, they're going to receive an update on her health and wellness as she, as she becomes a dairy cow. So they're pretty excited about that. Mrs. Githin, she's got the information today. So I just wanted to send that shout out. Then something else we're going to do for our second quarter awards, which is a little bit different, because you know, I don't love the kids being out of the building. Because of Coach Bell and his connections at Missouri Western, we are able to take our students for their second quarter kindness challenge reward to Missouri Western to a men's basketball game for free. So I'm really excited about that for our students to attend an event like that. And thanks to Dr. Robinson for allowing us to go, Aunt Angel for working out the bus situation with us. So we will be going to that on December sixteenth. We were one of four elementaries asked to attend this quote, education day. And just blessed to be able to do that. So thanks to everybody involved with that. Also, over the moon, proud, excited, flabbergasted about CIS's APR scores. Dr. Ormsy's going to share some information about that later, but I want you to hear from me how much we're celebrating at, at CIS with that. So I'll let her, I'll let her do the, do the data part of that. But I just wanted you guys to hear from me that super proud of our teachers and our kids.
Yeah, very exciting things.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I love the newsletter too.
Yeah. Anything for me?
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I'm standing for Mr. Fisher. His daughter is performing at a musical. And so he is there supporting her. So a few celebrations, we had one third of our student body came to parent teacher conferences, which is great. Sixth grade one, eighth graders and seventh graders are not super happy about that. Their sixth grader is just really hitting it out of the park this year. So it's super exciting. Then Mrs. Hopper went over one of our celebrations, which was the mentor PE, which we're really excited about. Our students are really loving. And those kiddos are able to play games because there's more kids involved. And so they're actually able to play full fledged games. And I think both sets of students are just learning some really great skills. And it's just super exciting to see. Attendance, we are at ninety point zero nine percent, which is ten percent over where we were this time last year.
Nice.
And that is a huge celebration for us and for the kids. And so, and parents, parents are making sure they're there. And that's huge. And we're very lucky for that. And then winter sports have started, and our kids are doing great things. So we're super proud of them.
Are there any, Mrs. Slim, are there any particular strategies that have gotten that? And can you share with all the buildings?
You know, I wish there was a magic cookie that we could use for that. I think one of the things is we've got some really strong relationships being built with teachers and maybe not with the teacher, but maybe with a counselor or someone else that, you know, and just like, we tell the kids every day, we're so happy to see your face. We are so happy you're here. And when they're not going, I'm like, man, I really miss you yesterday. I'm so glad you're back today. So I think it's just constant communication and talking with them and then supporting parents if and when they need it.
That's great.
That is great.
All right.
Thank you.
On to the high school.
Good evening. Last week, we were able to celebrate one hundred and eighty-five students who earned academic, an academic letter. By earning this honor, students had to be enrolled in CHS by the end of first quarter, be enrolled in one class from each of the four core areas of math, language arts, science, and social studies. They cannot have any failing grades, be enrolled in seven classes each semester, and then maintain a three point two GPA from the last grade check in May last year. So this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They are in that, that order. A student may be eligible for four consecutive years, beginning with the initial enrollment in ninth grade. And then any student that receives a failing grade in any class during any grade check is ineligible for that award. So yeah, one hundred and eighty-five students, super proud of them. Mrs. Babulka asked me, our high school art teacher, to share a celebration. She said several students participated in the United Methodist Church Community Art Show. Samuel Welch, Alana Laux, and Mrs. Babulka herself all earned awards. The students enjoyed refreshments and boding on each other's art pieces at the show's reception. So kudos to Mrs. Babulka and those students. I want to give a huge shout out. I don't know if everyone got to attend. I saw some of you at the, at the musical. Wonka was amazing. Want to give a shout out to Mrs. Robinson. She was thrown in the fire first year, and here we go. She did a great job with her first production as an official high school teacher. Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Dirks and the work they do, our cast and crew, everyone behind the scenes, our pit band, a lot of moving parts to make that a successful production. I'm ultra proud of those kids and those folks that helped out with that. I know countless volunteers, parents, things like that. Thank you so much. I know the kids are probably not thanking you at home, but thank you.
On the sets, the Wonka, the factory, that was a fun time too. I think that was something that when I was talking with Mrs. Dirks, that was something we were really proud of because it was so, it was wonderful. It was just like one seat.
It was unreal. They did a great job. Fall sports are officially over. And now we're on to, we're gearing up for winter. Actually, it's a jamboree tomorrow night. So finished our last fall sport, football Friday night. And here we are, we're jamboring tomorrow night with boys and girls. Start time at five o'clock if you are free tomorrow night. And then Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, next Tuesday at ten AM is our patriotic concert. Feel free, please attend. And then also, we are doing a, an appreciation breakfast for veterans in the community from eight-thirty to nine-thirty. So please help spread the word with that. I know Mrs. Baneum was working on a flyer today and was going to push that out as well. So thank you for that, Gina. But yeah, if you could help promote that, that's breakfast from eight-thirty to nine-thirty and, and our concert at ten.
And where's the breakfast?
In the comments.
Okay.
Yeah, just check in at the office with Maggie and get them, get everyone signed in. And then the concert in the Farmer Center. Any questions?
Really cool to see the career kickoff tailgate that the Farmers State Bank helped with. That seems like.
They had another, tonight, they were doing AP classes versus dual credits. I'll, I'll report more on that next month, that they were having another parent. Each month they have something that is their focus. So.
Your counseling center's taking it out.
Yeah.
I mean, so much communication.
Make my life a lot easier. I can tell you that. They, between Cassie, Heather Lee, and Nicole, they're, they're rocking it. They do a good job.
Appreciate you all. And it's, and it's a.
Yeah.
The seniors are winning.
They are. You throw a little graduation requirement on there, it changes things a little bit. But no, we're, we're very pleased we're wrapped with attendance. Obviously, there's some room to grow, but kind of get to that season of some sickness and things like that that are out of our control. But we'll get there. All right. Thank you, guys.
Yes, yes. Been waiting on this moment since July, whenever we first started talking about APR. It gives me great joy to report to all of our district stakeholders as we unwrapped our 2025 APR that the Cameron R1 School District has scored in the top ten percent of all Missouri public schools in the state of Missouri. We all, that is for our total APR score, forty-seventh out of five hundred and sixteen school districts that reported. We also scored in the top twenty percent of Missouri public schools for our three-year APR composite. That's ninety-first out of five hundred and sixteen school districts reporting. So to be in the top ten percent for total APR for the school year and the top twenty percent for our three-year composite is nothing short of just wonderful.
Hard work.
Yes, hard work that has paid off. And I want to take a moment just to thank all of our students.
And I want to take a moment just to thank all of our students who have studied so hard and who applied themselves on these assessments. We don't teach to the test, but unfortunately, the tests are how we are graded as a school district. I want to thank our teachers for all of the work that they have done on their curriculum, on their student engagement, on just being present for their kids and making their classrooms a positive learning environment. It has taken all of us working together to achieve this. Each building has had celebrations within this as we unwrapped it. Parkview, 100% of points for attendance and for having their KEA assessment. That's a kindergarten entrance assessment completed. The middle school had an 11.4% increase on their APR, that's the highest in four years. That's amazing. The high school, on their achievements, they were on track in ELA, Science and Social Studies, and their success ready student scores were either on track or target. And then I asked Mrs. Rucker to stay behind because I would not be able to sleep tonight if I did not tip my hat to her and her crew at CIS. Because out of 200, excuse me, 2,139 school district schools reporting, and this includes any school preschool through 12th grade, reported on the APR, 15 of those schools earned 100%. 102 were at or above CIS's 93.1% APR, which places Cameron Intermediate School in the top 4.7% of all schools. And then it gets even better. If you break that down to just elementary schools in the state of Missouri, CIS is ranked in the top 3%. It is huge points. And one last one. If you break it down to identical school grade levels, three through five, CIS is ranked in the top 2.5% of all elementary schools, grades three through five in the state of Missouri.
Thank you. I should have worn that. I will share it up with the staff.
We are, we're just so thrilled with, with everyone. It's, it's great to be able to, to realize that achievement now. Are, is the APR perfect? No, there's always going to be things that we can work on. We're not here to deny there are areas that, that have room for growth. But you have to pause, in a PLC school district, you have to pause and celebrate. You set goals, you work your tail off, and when you achieve those goals, you pause and you celebrate what got you there and the people who put the work in. So thank you to all of our students and our staff. And we want to honor them by just taking that moment and then we will get back to work because there, there's always room to, to grow. And we're going to do that through increased work with Step Up Consulting next year, which is the, the group that Mrs. Rucker has used and she's trained herself. She's used their methods at CIS. Right now, the middle school and the high school are both also working with Step Up Consulting and Parkview is excited to get on board. And we're also going to continue with our work on curriculum alignment to just hopefully just continue to see this growth in all of our buildings and increase our student engagement. But tonight, we celebrate.
Well done. Well done.
So I don't think, thank you. Questions for me?
Just one thing I wanted to highlight that I think is great, first year teachers breakfast. I know we bring them in in August or even late July, start priming them for that first year, but to touch base with them, you know, at this point in the semester, that is huge because it's easy to start to feel, ooh.
It was first year at Cameron, it wasn't even just first year. It was, if this is your first year, is a Cameron dragon, come and break bread with us. And that was great. They seemed really enjoying themselves and.
Almost too much, we had to have.
I did. The room started filling with other people coming for the next meeting. I was like, I love you, but.
Go back.
Well, I'm sure that gave them a sense of reassurance that we've got their back. That's great.
Well, I really like to see the KPIs and the numbers you're tracking because when you set goals, then you reach for the goals. And if you don't know what the numbers are, you don't know if you're behind. And so the way you guys are approaching this is really fabulous because you are setting the goals. And it allows for course corrections, little ones along the way that you can make as opposed to getting way far into the year and it being so far away that you can't. So kudos to you for doing that because that takes a lot of work to pull that data together and to get people on board with why you're doing it. And it showed, so nicely done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your leadership.
I want to have a pause.
That is so good.
We will be celebrating with the, all the staff and students in the coming weeks.
Okay, so we did not have any patrons submit the form to speak, so we'll move on to items for consideration. John, you felt your scholarship nominee?
Yeah, this is a scholarship through the Missouri School Awards Association. And actually, a couple of years ago, we had a winner in this. But every, usually in a member of the seminar, we nominate a student. And then regardless of whether they win or not, we usually give them a small scholarship at the award ceremony. And so you see the recommendation from the high school for that person.
Got a motion? Moved by Mrs. Peck to approve the nominee. Mr. Murphy, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passed.
Snow removal, let's hope we don't use it, but it would be nice. Doesn't sound like it's going to happen, but anyway, so this is our snower bid from Quality Landscaping, we all does all of our own. We've had this in the paper, in the shopper, in a couple of other places for a couple of weeks now. We only received one bid, so.
Moved except the snow removal bid. Moved by Mrs. Vayner, second by Mrs. Early. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passed.
Okay, and the last is Board Policy I-140P. Assistant Revision, we just needed to change a name. We had Bobby Jensen, and when Bobby left, we just kept with one, so we needed to move it to Crystal Young. So since it's not a major change, we went ahead and just did it, you know, it's just a name change.
Yes, this is an update to make them information current.
Right.
So. By Mrs. Early. Second by Mrs. Clark. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passed. All right, any comments by new board members before we?
I have a couple. There are a couple of groups I just wanted to shout out to. And one of them is the Matty, uh, yeah, um, group of custodians and all of the constant hard work that they do in our buildings, in the classrooms and outside of our buildings. They, they just work extremely hard and just a shout out to them and a big thank you for everything that they do. And then the other group is the Tank, the group of high school students that submits articles in their newspaper, into the Cameron newspaper, I should say, Citizen Observer. And just the good work that they're doing and stories and such. So just wanted to recognize them as well.
I just want to say that that Wonka play was absolutely incredible. The set with the boat moving, I, I thought was one of the best that I've seen here. Also, thank you to the school district, but also Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Zubeck for sponsoring 22 students to go to Jefferson City last week. They went on Thursday to Youth and Government and then brought them home safely on Saturday. And I think it was a wonderful experience had by all. So I want to thank those two teachers and again, the school district and the YNCA, the Mary Jo YNCA.
Actually, our community really steps up. They sponsor every one of those kids and not one kid had to pay anything out of the 22. That was all community from different civic organizations and everybody else, so.
It's about $300, I think, to send a student. And each of our kids were sponsored. And the school took care of the class down there and back. And so, yeah, thank you to the community and the sponsors, it's amazing.
I, I would just jump in on the Willie Wonka. I got to play in the pit and so I got to witness firsthand some of the interactions of the teachers and the students and reminded me how great that is. But a, a big congratulations to Terry Robinson, who was the artistic director. Candace Williams was our house manager backstage. And there was a lot of moving parts, as you have said. And Jamie Dirks, Dr. Dirks was our vocal coach, music director. And then Jake Jennings conducted his first musical. And so, and Ray Sean Tolbert was backstage helping out. Just a great team and they worked well together, it was really fun to be a part of that. And congratulations to all of our fall sports on good seasons.
I, I just want to say, serving on this board through COVID, coming out of COVID and trying to get our kids back on track. And I know we're scrutinized a lot in the community, but I can tell you that we talked about this repeatedly and encouraged and wanted to provide the resources necessary to get attendance back up and to get those scores back up. I'm just, I, I, I want the community to hear what the students and the staff were able to do. And I want to be really clear with the community that those scores are the official scores from DESI that is part of the Missouri School Improvement Six program. Those are the actual scores from DESI for the annual performance report. That's what we're accountable for and that's how we compare ourselves to the other districts in the state. That's, it is worth celebrating, it is recognizing our families who got their kids here, kids learn when they're in school. And if they're not here, they're not learning. And it took a community effort to recover and it took a lot of dedication. And that's what ultimately we're here for. And I'm just grateful, I'm, I'm beyond grateful. The work is worth celebrating and is worth thanking our students for taking the time and doing those tests that we asked them to do and applying themselves. So I, I don't even know how to express what I feel right now, walking through COVID, watching what we were doing, being, I, I don't do it like you guys do it, but I do home this position and the responsibility to the community and the oath that I took. And I shared your concern and I knew we could do it. I knew we could do it and we have done it and I think we'll continue to do it. So thanks.
Here, here, well said, well said.
I'm not following that.
Okay. And do I have a motion to go into quick session pursuant to? Oh, oh, six.
610.
61021, subsection 13 and 3.
So moved.
Second, and Mrs. Peck, second, and Mrs. Clark, vote call.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, that was a second by.